I'd like to begin by thanking the League of Women Voters, the East Bay Times, and my opponents for this debate. My name is Tim White, and my wife and I have 20 years. Have been a part of the Warren community for a little over eight years now. During that time, I've proudly served the Warren Fire Department, Warren Rescue Squad, and I serve on the Marine Unit while owning a small home repair business. I'm your blue collar candidate for a blue collar town. Warren's a working-class town, and I believe that I am the working-class candidate. I have over 30 years' experience in electrical plumbing and boilers and other trades. And when elected, I look forward to working with the town council as a team to help serve the town of Warren and to help solve the issues that are currently facing Warren.
Thank you. Next, we have Derek Trombley.
Thank you. Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and the East Bay Media Corp. for putting on this forum. You've always done a great job, year after year, of helping the voting public become informed about who's running and why. It's my great privilege to be here tonight to talk about my vision for helping Warren move forward.
My name is Derek Trombley. I'm a candidate for the Warren Town Council. I was born and raised here in Warren to my mom Debbie, nutritionist for Meals on Wheels, and head starter, my father Bruce, the M.T. in Massachusetts, and later the handyman at the George Yale Library. Growing up in Warren, I received a fantastic education at our local public schools, and then later graduated from Rhode Island College, and even later from Suffolk University with a law degree and a master's of public administration. Currently, I am employed as a policy analyst at the Rhode Island House of Representatives, where I provide research and analysis on important issues affecting our state. I'm also an active volunteer in town, as I serve as a member of the Tax Assessment Review Board, vice chair of the Parks, Recreation, and Economic Development Boards, and as a trustee of the George Yale Library. I love Warren, and everything that I have done in my life would not have been possible without my family and my community. And everything I've accomplished so far in my life has been to provide for my family and to make my community proud. I have a great love of Warren, and great openness and willingness to work with folks across the aisle to get things done to benefit all of us. I believe that I have the right combination of educational background, professional experience, and passion to help Warren move forward out of the difficulties we find ourselves in. Thank you, and I calmly ask for your vote on election day.
Thank you. Finally, we have Louis Regal.
Yes, my name is Louis Regal, and I served on a council same year. I don't remember being disheartened back then for 16 years. I want to thank the League of Women Voters, Scott, and especially my wife will let me run. And also my friends, Tim and Derek. So I've been married to my wife for 41 years, have two sons, Louis and Matthew. Been a resident since June of 1967 in Warren. I graduated from Warren High in 1979. I served as town councilperson from 1996 to 2008. During that time, I was vice chairman. I was a member of the Warren Parenting Rotary Club for over 25 years, president three times, I received four Paul Carris Fellowship awards. Currently, I'm vice president of Warren Historic Army Committee, and I served 90 years as vice chairman of the Warren Housing Authority. I am retired now. I was first vice president, sales team manager at Bay Coast Bank. And I'm running because I see, I'm not mad, but I'm disappointed in some of the things that have happened in the community, especially having the knowledge of being a councilperson. And I think what needs to be addressed is our financial responsibility. We need to maintain our county infrastructure. We need to monitor our school spending and support education. And we need better communication to our residents.
All right. Thank you. We move to questions. Mr. White, we're going to start with you and go down the road. First question. If elected to serve, you will spend four years in leadership of the town of Warren. What is one thing you hope to accomplish during that four-year term? Something that would have lasting impact on the town of Warren?
Excellent question. I think if one thing stands out, it would be to help solve the problem of where best to fit affordable housing in a small town. I think one-size-fits-all legislation has really no place in a town as small as Warren with beryl roads, limited groceries, limited public transit. And I think that the committee that has just been formed, that is being currently staffed, will be an excellent way forward towards solving that issue. We can't just put these in any old farm. We can't put this in any old lot. It's not up to the residents to have to just figure something out, nor the wildlife. Saltwater estuaries are not a good neighbor for affordable housing lots, and neither are small beryl roads downtown. I don't think anyone in this room would find themselves in favor of urban street development.
Mr. Trombley, same question.
Could you repeat the question?
Sure. If elected to serve under Governor Fife, you'll spend four years in leadership of the town. What's one thing you hope to accomplish during that four-year term? Something that would have lasting impact on Warren?
Thank you. That's a great question. I think that the focus question is more on the permanence. So I'll avoid talking about the financial condition of the town, because that's only temporary. But my top priority in a fiscal infrastructure point is to help repair some of the roads in town and fix potholes and such, but also to get big things done. So the broken bridge project that's been going on for several years now in town, I want to see that completed. And also to get some progress on the East Bay bike path bridges and get those finished as well. That would be huge for people to come and bike to Warren. That would be great for recreation, and those are things that I think permanently would improve Warren.
Thank you.
Mr. Regal.
I think the top priorities are fiscal responsibility. The number-one issue that I have from people is taxes going up and that, you know, close to 6% that's unheard. And again, I don't get mad at issues anymore. If you get older, you just get disappointed and try to resolve them. I came to the first budget meeting, and they kept asking, "Well, how much did we spend last year?" And I suggested, "Hey, you should have how much you spent last year. You should have how much you spent here today." And they said, "It's a good idea. We'll do it next month." Well, they hadn't had anything reconciled yet, so they didn't have the faintest idea. So that showed me that there has been no responsibility on the town council's part of knowing what we have, what we've spent up to date. So fiscal responsibility, to me, is the number-one thing. And affordability, when we talk about affordable housing, it has to start with the tax base of the town economy.
Please, go ahead.
I think it's important to note that the broken bridge is currently being finished. I was just out looking at it the other day. It's probably about a third to a half finished. All the parts are in place, and it'll be done. When I spoke to the DPW director recently, it should be done by the end of the year or just after. And as far as roads and potholes go, without funding to the DPW, they can't fix it. Unless we find alternative sources of income for the town or continue to raise taxes, the roads won't get fixed and the potholes will not get filled. DPW needs the money first.
Thank you. All right. New question, Mr. Trombley, starts with you. A recent lawsuit settlement showed the important role of the town council in overseeing a responsible budget and building a healthy fund balance for the town. Are you confident you can handle the responsibility of managing a municipal budget?
Yes, I can. I have a master's degree in public administration. I've been trained and educated in the ways in which to manage a local budget. And I also have practical experience in that I'm an attorney and I have a legal background as well. And as far as the lawsuit that led us into this sort of situation that Warren is in, I think that what we should have had at the time was catastrophic coverage, is what it's known as, so that the money didn't come from our rainy day funding. It came from that coverage. And I would like to see that adopted and take out a policy for that if elected. In addition, there are some interesting findings that just came out from the Auditor General's annual municipal finance report, which I would like to see adopted, which govern how the reserve account can be spent and governs sort of how, when it is overspent, how a plan to replenish it is created. Thank you.
Mr. Regal.
I'm 63. Can I ask a question?
I like talking, and people like listening. A recent lawsuit settlement showed the important role of the town council in overseeing a responsible budget and building a healthy fund balance. Are you confident you can handle the responsibility of managing a municipal budget?
Yeah. And when I was on council, I was always hesitant about having too much of a fund balance. Having too much of a fund balance is a liability when people see how much you have. It's also a bit taxing to people. When you look at the auditors, they always want to see about 18% for fund balance. But 10% to me is the more responsible thing to have.
Thank you. All right. I'm sorry, that was the end of... No, Mr. White, I'm sorry. They lost that.
Thank you.
Mr. White, same question.
I'm the guy that's making the calls about the potholes. And it's easy to just jump in and blame DPW and say they're not getting it done. But as I just mentioned before, without the money and without the budget and without the funds to get it done, nothing will get done. I believe the judgment bond that is either taking place or is in the process of being finalized is going to absorb a lot of the shock from the lawsuit. And having been the person in the trenches, working and speaking to the different department heads, I do believe that there's a better way to allocate the budget to the departments. And there are certain things that should not be cut, while there's things that certainly can be cut.
Thank you. All right. Good question. Mr. Regal. Did you approve or disapprove of last year's $200 million school bond and why?
I approved it because I thought it was a good investment for the community. And the amount that we were going to pay, what, I think 20% of the 80% that they were going to pay, I thought was a small move. It was an investment. However, I wasn't aware of the financial crisis we were going to go into. That doesn't mean it still isn't a good investment. We just have to be more careful, especially with the financial situation that we're in.
Mr. White, same question.
I'm in favor of the school bond. I've spoken to many parents who have been to the school. I've not been through the school, but I've spoken to parents who do have kids at the school. And they have real opinions about the condition of the school. How it got to that condition and why it got to that condition absolutely needs to be explored. We can't, I don't even think the school is that old, from what I've been told. But the numbers have been changing here and there. And the only concern that I've brought up is that when you try to bring a new vote on something that's already previously been voted on in the past, it's a slippery slope. You need to respect a vote, even if, you know, a very small, it passed by a 65% margin in Warren. So even if it's up by a small margin and a small amount of people, the vote took place and needs to be respected, but I am in fact in favor.
Mr. Trombley.
I attended Nacoa High School myself. I graduated about 11 years ago. And when I was in attendance, there was regular flooding of hallways and areas of the school. And I can only imagine that the conditions have not improved in these last 11 years or so. So I know from personal experience that we need to make this investment. And to answer the question, I did support the school bonds last year. I wrote into the paper about it.
Thanks so much. Next question, Mr. White. The AARP network of age-friendly communities identifies key features of these communities as safe, walkable streets, better housing and transportation options, access to key services, and opportunities for residents to participate in community activities. Is Warren age-friendly? How could it be more age-friendly?
We have, I believe it's five assisted living centers in Warren. So if anyone is prepared to deal with the medical and mental health needs that come along with aging, an aging population, Warren is very versed in that. Where we fall short is, for example, the areas where they're proposing to put Settlers Green or Penny Lane. There's no public transit. There are no walkable services. There's no walkable grocery store. There's no grocery store. I think they might even qualify as a food desert, if you did the math. So while downtown is served very well, the cost to live downtown is only going up. So I think that in order to be more AARP-minded, if you will, or an aging population-minded, we definitely need services, we need that type of housing to be where the services can support it.
Mr. Trombley, same question. Can you repeat the question? It's a study. The AARP network of age-friendly communities identifies key features of these communities as safe, walkable streets, better housing and transportation, access to key services, and opportunities for residents to participate in community activities. Is Warren age-friendly? How could it be more age-friendly?
I would say that Warren is age-friendly, but we can do an absolutely better job. Warren is only one of four communities in the state that doesn't have any dedicated affordable units of housing for seniors. And that's, to give an example, that's sort of like the Franklin Court example. And I would love to see something like that here in Warren. And I think housing is a key problem for seniors, because we have seniors in our community that live in homes that they purchased 50, 60 years ago when they had families. And now they're looking to downsize and recoup the investment that they've made in their homes, but have nowhere to downsize to. And we all know that housing is a huge issue, especially the supply of housing. So one thing that I'd like to do if elected is advance an idealized accessory dwelling unit, which was, I believe, the AARP's top legislative priority nationwide last year. And so I think that if we can adopt that, what may you use, for those who might be unfamiliar, it's sort of when you turn a garage, or a basement, or a shed, or an attic into an extra unit of housing for, usually like for an in-law, but it could be for anybody. And I'd like to see, if I'm elected, I'd like to see us adopt an ordinance that broadens the ability for folks in Warren to have, especially elderly folks.
Mr. Regal.
I'm old. I'm supposed to know this, right? So anyways, I just retired, and I had a neighbor who retired. He's already passed, and he was already retired for 25 years. And he was a banker. And he said to me, "Look, you know, when I retired, I did pretty well. My retirement was good. But 25 years later, it's not so good anymore." And I think that we have to be, always keep that in the back of our mind, that we have a lot of retired people who've been retired for a long time. So keeping our taxes as low as possible is probably the number-one issue. As far as the walkability and stuff, I think we have a beautiful community. There are areas, as far as cleaning our sidewalks, our streets. Yes, they need to be done, but I think affordability is still important.
I could add on to...
Louis, go ahead.
Sorry, I just thought of something like that. So for example, for transportation, we know that we have the 60 bus that comes down Main Street, but there's been some talk and some proposals about having the 60 bus sort of alternate and go down Medicom at times. And I think that I would like to explore adopting that and convincing DOT to adopt that if I'm elected. Thank you.
Thank you. New topic, Mr. Trombley, starts with you. The growth of the Warren restaurant scene has been one of the great local stories of the past decade throughout the downtown district, and particularly along Water Street, thousands of people dining every night, many of them traveling by car from out of town. As a result, the surrounding areas, mostly residential, are often congested with limited public parking options. Should Warren be doing more to respond to this situation? What could be done?
Absolutely. And I currently am vice chair of the Economic Development Board. And when I was chair of that board, I had a keen interest in addressing the parking situation downtown. Our board didn't have a budget to do any sort of studies, but we came up with a plan first to increase signage to municipal lots such as along Franklin Street and behind Town Hall, which many of you probably have parked in this evening. And the plan, the idea is that if we can move folks from parking nearest to the restaurant or shop where they're headed and have them walk a short distance to it, and ways to incentivize that. So we worked on a plan, and I'd like to see the first step of that plan implemented, which is adding additional signage downtown to identify public lots. Thank you.
Mr. Regal.
Yes, I always look at it negative as a positive. You know, part of the ambition beyond going to these places is walking by different places that you never even knew existed in the county. So even though it's a negative, it is a positive, because people get to see other restaurants, they get to see other little stores that they never saw. And it is part of living in, going to restaurants in those areas. I mean, you just can't make up the parking if it's no parking, and you have to walk.
Mr. White.
Water Street is constantly evolving. It's, I'm sure, in the last 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, it has changed immensely. And the key is to strike a balance between the long-term residents who have rights, who remember it as a quieter, slower area, and the budding restaurant industry that can smell it right now coming through the windows, making me hungry. So, you know, restaurants is not a bad thing. Warren depends on that entertainment tax. But the rights of the restaurants can't impede or impinge too greatly on the longer-term residents. Neighborhood parking programs worked really well in other cities where I've lived in, and it gives residents rights, and it gives them a parking spot of their own that they will always have. Parking shovel buses is an option, down to the Warren Town Beach Lots. You know, it's worth looking into, worth exploring, and it needs discussion.
Thank you. New topic, Mr. Regal. We turn it over to you. In 2023, the Warren Town Council passed an ordinance regulating short-term rentals, including placing a cap on the total number of units allowed in the town. Do you agree with this regulation? Do you have any sense of whether the short-term rental regulations are having an impact?
So I was kind of against this, and the reason why? Warren is what it is today, because people, you know... The great thing about Warren is people lived in Warren for a long time. To bad, there is a lot of things that haven't happened. As these people came and recognized what Warren was, they picked some up. And so that's a positive thing, and you don't want this stuff to keep happening. Now, I do know it has a negative impact on the rental market. But yeah, I don't think putting a limit on it was a good idea at the time.
Mr. White.
You know, I was at one of the last town council meetings when they took questions from the public about short-term rentals. And each time the town council asked him, "So describe your situation." And they said, "Well, I don't want to say. I don't want to say. I don't want to tell you where I'm at." And in talking to one of his neighbors, it's because a garden shed was turned into a short-term rental. They added some insulation, ran water and power out to it without permits, and now he rents it out. Short-term rentals need to be regulated to some extent. You know, if we think we've got parking problems now, imagine all the Connecticut, Massachusetts, and other surrounding states license plates up and down our street for every single person that wants to put two more visitors in their shed. There needs to be regulation. It needs to be registered. It needs to be monitored. And it's just going to exacerbate the existing parking problem. So it absolutely needs some form of regulation.
Yep. Mr. Trombley, same question.
Absolutely. So first of all, what I'd like to say is that when I was chair of the Economic Development Board, our board actually put together a presentation on short-term rentals that I was able to give to the town council to help inform their decisions about the regulations surrounding short-term rentals. And I agree that the cap on the number has been a positive, because even though short-term rentals do have an economic benefit to the community, they also have an economic cost by lowering the supply of long-term rentals, which can hurt and drive up the cost of long-term residents from being able to stay in the community. In addition, it's a health and safety issue, because when you have folks that are staying in an unfamiliar location, especially if they're on vacation and enjoying themselves, sometimes you need police and rescue to go out to that address. And they need to know, okay, are these people long-term residents? Are they short-term residents? And the residents who are staying there in short-term capacity need to know, okay, what's the local number for the fire department in case they burn their kitchen down? And I was up there. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to try and hit on some questions you guys disagree on, so you can talk more, because you've got a lot of wild cards you haven't used yet. But we're about two-thirds of the way through our question-and-answer session. We've got a few more to go. Mr. White, come around to start with you. Would you support removing the word voluntary from the Warren Voluntary Historic District Commission?
I do. We already function as a mandatory district. If you look in our demolition ordinance, you cannot remove your siding. You cannot change the facade. You can't change your windows without coming before the HTC. HTC, it's just how it is already. It's a formality to remove the word mandatory. We already function as one. And one of the things I hear over and over is how charming our historic district is. And if they all end up vinyl-sided, if they all end up with vinyl windows, you're going to lose that charm, and we're going to lose what we currently are sitting in now. Imagine Warren without this building we're sitting in. There's a lot of positives that go along with removing that term, but I do agree with it.
Mr. Trombley.
So I think that this is part of a comprehensive plan, which I believe the council is likely going to vote to advance to state approval tomorrow. And if it is approved, what I'd like to do, because one of the things I want to promote more and more is transparency. I've knocked on a lot of doors, 1,800 or so to be exact, this election season. And it shocks me sometimes how folks don't even know about what's going on in their own backyard in terms of this lawsuit that just happened, in terms of other things that are going on. And I think it's necessary for these things to be more transparent. So if our comprehensive plan is approved, which does alter removing the voluntary from the historic district, I would like to, at a future town council meeting, put on the agenda a presentation explaining exactly what this change would represent and what impact it would or would not have. Ultimately, I want to make sure that folks don't get scared, rumors don't go around that this change is going to affect and increase costs for middle-class folks with tight budgets living in our voluntary historic district.
Mr. Regal.
Absolutely not. I've been vice president of Historic, Warren Army, and worse, at Urban Storm. I am 100% for historic preservation. But you know, 28 years ago, let's say 28 years, I'm trying to count how many people I think was in this room, and this room was packed. And we were late, up 12:30 at night, and it was everyone. We had this debate. It was a heated debate. We came to the conclusion that the voluntary historic district was the best way. It was a compromise. If you're for historic preservation, you're going to get your tax credit. And if you're not, at least you can try to empower someone to do it. The thing tonight is to keep the tax base, is to try to keep the taxes low. That is almost an added tax when you have to do it. But not everyone can afford to do it, the historic preservation. And the whole goal was to try to get them to do as much as possible, but not to tell an 80-year-old person they have to move out of their house because they can't flush their front steps. I thought it was 80-year-old. It's awkward. So again, I'm 100% historic preservation. Absolutely. But not everyone can afford to keep it. Not everyone can afford to maintain it. What we have right now, you can do historic preservation, but you're not forcing other people that can't to do nothing. And I think that's wrong.
Thank you. New question, Mr. Trombley, starts with you. What could or should the town have done differently regarding the controversial development proposals at Benton Court Farm, Penny Lane, and Liberty Street?
Well, to start off, I want to clear up some misconceptions that might be going on around town and just inform folks. So those proposals that you've just mentioned were offered through what's known as a comprehensive permit, which raises separate tracks for housing development. Now, I don't want to bore you with all the legal technicalities, but the bottom line is that these projects are not reviewed by the town council. It is solely the planning board's discretion. What I would propose to do is, if elected, is to appoint folks to our planning board who have professional experience, who are very knowledgeable and experienced, and make sure that those folks know what the law is and that it gets followed. And in addition, one thing other that the council can do is approve a comprehensive plan that gets approved by the state that calls for areas of new housing development. And those are the two areas that I think the town council has authority, and that's what I would support. Hope I've answered the question. Thank you.
Mr. Regal.
I'm sorry. Ask the question again. When people start talking, they can paddle. Go ahead.
Well, it's good that you're listening to them. What could or should the town have done differently regarding the controversial development proposals at Benton Court Farm, Penny Lane, and Liberty Street?
So there's a distinction between Liberty Street, Benton Court Farm, and Penny Lane. Penny Lane would be 100% towards our voter. The other two wouldn't. As a matter of fact, the other two was almost a detriment, because as you're putting in more residential property, and you're putting fewer affordable houses, you're only raising the number. You'll never catch up. The way I think it should be handled, first of all, Morbid Street is a harbor shell. But we could be using that to our benefit. We should get all our legislators on a bus and bring it to Norbit Street to see what that comprehensive plan has done for us, permitting. Oh, boy, that side track just now.
Okay, no good.
Yeah, no, it's tough.
I don't have any life lines.
No, I don't, I'm sorry, it came back to me. So this affordable housing, it shouldn't even be called the affordable housing. It should be called subsidized housing because truly, that's what it is. Affordable housing is subsidized housing. And I agree with Senator Fidler that we have Section 8 Housing Choice Act, which we have about 200 of them. We have in place right now about 212 that are legal units. And then we have something that we don't even take into consideration, that's nursing homes. We have about 274 people in a nursing home. 274 people in a nurse home, you know, if they're each here in a room, that's still, that's close to 150 units that we're not to take into consideration. And then we have another affordable housing that we can't even count, and that's people that are presently in the units now. I have tenants, I'd say probably half of them, probably 30% market value. And I've talked to other landlords, and they're in the same boat. And they're not going to raise their rents because they have a relationship with their tenants. So we do have, we have to relook at this affordable housing issue. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't be building more units, but you know what, we should be building all, 100% should be affordable housing and not, you know, using 10% or 20% of the developments. It seems like young people are benefiting of the developers, and the people that need the units cannot benefit. So that's my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. White, same question.
If there's one thing that Penny Lane and Settlers Green have in common, it's lack of amenities. You're sticking these, this one-size-fits-all legislation for affordable housing next to a saltwater estuary in an open space along the Green Belt where, you know, people live on already unmaintained and/or very little maintenance-performed roads with no amenities. There's no buses, there's no walkable grocery stores, nothing. And you're going to build these developments out in the middle of nowhere. They're just going to be sitting there. None of these would normally be permitted unless it was part of this comprehensive permit, which, again, one-size-fits-all does not work in Warren. Then you take Liberty Street, where you've got some of the most narrow roads in the downtown district, and you want to put how many units in there? They had to bend over backwards to make it work so the fire department could get in this lot. And the people that live around Liberty Street have rights. They've got expectations of the town to do better. You can't put more intelligent or different people on the planning board unless they apply. You can't just pull them out of thin air. If these people aren't applying, then, you know, you have to put the people that apply in there and trust that they're going to do their best and they're going to do their job. I think the formation of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee was an excellent start, and I'll rest at that.
Yeah, please.
I'd just like to say to the point, I think because we weren't necessarily putting the best or most knowledgeable, most experienced, or people that were following the law on the planning board is why we ended up with the Settlers Green lawsuit ending up as it did. They rejected the plan without hearing evidence, which was in violation of the law, and the town had to spend money fighting that legal case all the way to Superior Court. It took, I think, four years. So I don't want to see that happen, and I don't want to see those mistakes repeated. And I think that we desperately need to find the right qualified candidates and appoint them to the planning board.
Okay, thank you. Moving to a new question, Mr. Rieger, start with you. Does the Warren Town Council have a role to play in setting policies in response to climate change, rising water levels, or any other environmental challenges? Is there anything you would hope to accomplish?
We're faced with that right now with the comprehensive plan. And one of the things that the comprehensive plan is saying that that Market Street's going to be flooded, and one of the proposals is to remove houses and eliminate houses, and we have no money. You know, there's always two ways to go on about things. You can remove houses, and you can try to protect those houses. And I think this is one of the Bob Rulie things, and he wrote it up. Actually, Market Street was supposed to be repaved sidewalks and all. And Bob Rulie wrote up that whole article about the flooding, that in ten years, Market Street's going to be flooded. And so that project was supposed to be done, they put a stop to it, I believe it was because of Bob Rulie. So we can go two ways about things. We can try to protect the people, water barriers or whatever. I mean, or you can go that route, which makes very little sense to me. Again, yeah, it could be flooded in ten years, but where does the flood stop? Does it stop at Chow Street? Does it stop at Chow Street? Are we going to pull out all the houses? I mean, where does it end? And can we control this? Can we control buying other people's houses? Or can we utilize our resources and try to protect these people? Try to protect them in many ways, try to raise utilities, whatever it is, light gates. I mean, again, there's two ways to go around it. And even if we were to remove all those houses, you know, we could have a hurricane tomorrow, and it could wipe them out all and lock shut. So I think we have to take a better look at the way we go about things, not just taking one person's perspective and not looking at other ways of resolving these issues.
Thank you. Mr. White?
After a once-in-every-two-or-three-year rainstorm, it wasn't even a once-in-five-or-ten-year storm, I saw pictures of people canoeing down Market Street. It's going to happen, it's going to continue to happen. There is current federal funding that was just approved by Congress, which was used to buy flood-prone properties in Cranston and Johnson along the Pecassett River. The Natural Resources Conservation Service is authorized by the federal government to buy conservation protections for properties and restore them as part of the natural flood plan. So there are federal programs out there, but we need to make sure that our elected officials are working for our best interest in smaller towns like Warren. We matter too, not just Johnston, not just Cranston, not just the bigger cities, Providence, but Warren has the same problems and deserves the same amount of funding and the same attention.
Mr. Traumley?
Well, climate change is a real threat to low-line coastal towns, and Warren has seventeen miles of coastline. It's a wonderful community that we have, but it is under threat due to these issues. Now, what I'd like to see is to formalize, because these are issues that are most best handled at the national level or the international level, but what we can do on a local level is formalize a partnership between the East Bay communities, between Barrington, Warren, and Bristol, as we all are going to be facing some very difficult flooding situations. And Market's Men Coms are a huge part of that, and it's in the comprehensive plan. And if that comprehensive plan is approved, then we can start applying for federal opportunities and state opportunities to help get some funding to do that. But until that happens, it's just an idea. But through partnering with Barrington and Bristol, which are much wealthier communities, we may be able to get some things started, pool resources, pool expertise, and get things done. That's what I'm committed to doing if elected.
Thank you. I'm going to have one more question. Who's commenting on the food? It's going.
I have more questions, yeah, bye.
Oh, really, go on. Any more questions here?
I'm craving two.
Irene Dordash, don't worry about it.
It is so good. Anyway, all right, one more question. And I'm gonna, whoever's ready to answer it first, go first, because at this point, you've all had a equal chance to go first. Is there anything else you'd like to talk about that we have not talked about yet? Mr. Rieger?
Yeah.
One minute.
So, you know, I was on a council for many years, for twelve years, about sixteen years ago, and I'm very proud of all the dominicans I accomplished. When I started on a council, actually, Wally sat next to me. Wally was tough, and our budget for sidewalks was $3,500. And I'm going to tell you, we had a push-push with $10,000, and then we left him. We set a bond for $2 million. And we did a lot of roads, and we talked about parking. One of the things that John Massed, when he was putting his new sidewalks, when he realized it was an ability to put in driveway, people drive, where people could have driveways, we put them in to create parking. Now, again, you know, when I drive down Chow Street, I'm very disappointed at the way we're maintaining our streets. Weed's all over the place, three feet tall. As you're coming in from Barrington, it's totally disgusting. So maintaining our infrastructure, to me, is so, so important. And it's not, you know what, I'm telling you, finding the money for cement is a lot harder than pulling the weeds. And when we talk about flooding, if we don't clean our streets, we don't clean our roads, what happens to that sand? It goes into the catch basins, and we create more flooding. So I think we have to work smarter, and that's one of the issues that I feel very strongly about. Or maybe I'm just a neat freak, maybe I just hate weeds, but I think it's important to keep our town as clean as possible.
Okay. Mr. White, would you go first?
Sure. Infrastructure. There are eighty-four miles of public roads, or Warren-owned roads, in town. Twenty-four of those are state or major intersections. And of the eighty-four miles of roads to maintain in Warren, over 30% of them need myerehabilitation, 37% have no preventative maintenance, and over 25% need routine maintenance. The total comes out to almost $6 million, and this was from a couple of years ago, the road survey that was done. It seems like we have a long-term commitment to not fixing our roads, cutting our weeds, mowing our lawns. Warren has 67 acres of grass to maintain. And the only way that's going to get done is by properly allocating funds to DPW. There is one department that does it all. We don't have a parks department, we don't have a rec department, a roads department. It's DPW. If we don't stop cutting their budget, cutting their overtime, cutting their fuel costs and allocations and budgets, none of this is going to get taken care of. Now is the time to start pick a road per year and fix it. Thanks.
Yeah. Hold on, hold on. Mr. Traumley hasn't had a chance to answer yet.
Sure, I'm perfectly happy. Well, thank you. The top issue that I've heard at the doors in Warren, and the top issue that I don't think we addressed enough here tonight, buckle up, folks, because I have a lot of wild cards to use, is the financial crisis that has hit this town. In the last, in four out of the last five years, Warren has run a structural deficit. Our rainy day fund went from $14 million to $8 million, and then a catastrophic event occurred and put us on the path to what has essentially been a very austerity-driven administration. And I don't blame the council for everything. I actually give them a lot of credit for the response that they've had to claw back on expenses, to appoint a budget committee with experienced, knowledgeable folks on how to address these things. But we were only kept from going into a deficit for the fifth year in a row because of residual COVID money. And if we can, we were starting off with a deficit of about $1 million due to the lawsuit. That is partially covered by the judgment vote, although Mr. White is correct. I don't know how far along that process is. But the structural deficit that we have is about $1 million already. So we do have to, even if we were to level fund, we're still running a deficit. So we do have to find areas where we have to claw back, where we have to be smart with our expenses. And truth be told, Warren hasn't been following actuarially determined contribution levels for our pensions, for our other post-employment benefits for city employees, and even for our school teachers through the regional school district. So we have to take a very hard and tough look at our budget. And I think that, I'm a detailed-oriented person, and I think that I'm perhaps one of the best persons to take a look at that. Thank you.
I'll give you thirty seconds.
Sure. So as far as the budgeting for the higher department and trying to add more people, you know, I was there many years ago, and I thought it was adding more people was the answer. But it's not the answer, it's direction. You know, when we talk about we don't have any funding for them to do the weeds and simple things, well, just recently at one of the council meetings, they went over budget on the garbage pickup. They didn't even realize they had gone over budget, shame on them. And where do they get the money from? Overtime. So this idea that they don't have the money to do what needs to be done, that's not the case. They need proper direction.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move to closing statements. Mr. Rieger, we're going to start with you. You've used all your wild cards, so you have a minute for your closing statement. Take it away.
So again, what I stated earlier, the reason I'm running is not because I'm mad. You didn't really get mad, but I'm disappointed in the way the town is running. I think fiscal responsibility is very important, and I don't think it's that difficult. It's not that difficult to show a town council a monthly budget. And in that monthly budget, you have an area where you have how much you spent today. And, you know, the lighting budget's $120,000, you know you're going to spend $10,000 a month. Very simple, 120 divided by 12. And if you get to the point on the tenth month, you spent $120,000, the department head's supposed to come to the council, and the council will say, "Yeah, we're going to give you another $40,000," or the council's going to say, "Shut off the lights." It hasn't been working that way, and it needs to work that way. We need to maintain our infrastructure, and one of the things I've been hearing all the time is that, you know, we don't have the money. Well, most of the infrastructure I need to be helped on is 136. And, you know, I've heard from the council blaming our elected representatives. But you know what? We have to put more emphasis on our representatives, that 136 needs to be done. It's hazardous, it's horrible.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Mr. Traumley, you have up to two minutes, if you'd like.
Thank you. I'll let tonight first by thanking all of you for coming, and thanking those watching at home and those who may watch this recording later. Thank you for coming out and caring about the future of our town. Tonight, you've heard different perspectives on the challenges Warren faces and solutions to those problems from three candidates seeking to become the next councillors in Warren. Each candidate offers a different background and different experiences from the others, and it's up to you voters to determine who you think would serve our community best. I knew from a young age that I had the desire to become somebody worthy enough to serve my community and help make the lives of my friends and neighbors a bit easier. Over the last two years, I have attended almost every town council meeting from beginning to end to learn and prepare myself for the duties that this job entails. In this election, I have knocked on over eighteen hundred doors and spoken to hundreds of voters about not only my qualifications, but also what their concerns are and how best to help them. To the best of my knowledge, Warren has not had an attorney serve as a member of the town council since before I was born, and I feel that we need the perspective of an attorney, especially considering that the current financial crisis was largely caused by a lawsuit against the town. I have a background in education, complemented by my years of service at the town and my professional experience, which makes me uniquely suited to serve the people of Warren. On personal note, Warren is my home, it has always been my home, and God willing, it will remain my home for the rest of my life. I want to wake up in forty years here in Warren and know that I did everything I could to ensure a prosperous future for our community. As I said before, everything that I've been able to accomplish in my life so far has been out of a desire to provide for my family and to make my community proud. Genuinely, I would not be who I am today if I had not, if I had been born in any other place because Warren is a special, wonderful place to live. If I have the great privilege to become an elected to the Warren Town Council, I promise that I will be accessible, I will listen to my constituents, and I will address your needs and concerns with compassion, respect, and common sense. Thank you for listening, and I respectfully ask for your vote and support on November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. White, you have up to three and a half minutes, if you'd like.
Oh, neither. Instead of budget cuts, we need to focus on alternative funding sources. We've got to look deeper, and the residents of Warren cannot keep trying to make up the difference with higher and higher property taxes every year. In other cities I've lived in, we were shocked when our property tax got to $3,000 a month. This is outrageous! And look what they are here, look at our rates. And I get it, we're in a small town, and we have all the same municipal needs as even a large town, but we have much fewer people to do it. So that's why fiscal responsibility is so important in this case. What, a small bump in property taxes goes a long way in a small town. So it's important that we use those funds wisely, and when cuts are needed, cut the right departments. I'm not in this to seek a higher office, I'm not trying to pad a resume. I'm here to fix Warren, I'm here to help work with the town council and come up with ideas that they may not have thought of because I'm not an attorney and I'm not a banker. If there's one comment that I hear often is that Warren is losing its small-town sense of community with overcrowding, traffic, all of those things. And I think we need to work vigorously to preserve the way of life that the lifelong residents of Warren have come to enjoy and know as home. I appreciate your time, your consideration and support, and together, I do believe we can make a difference for ourselves as well as future generations, and I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott? Can I use this guy to thank everyone and to vote for me?
You use the ball.
I've got a couple extra.
Do I listen to this out?
Go ahead.
All right. So first of all, a round of applause for the candidates.